At 7:00 AM on March 27th, 2019, we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee the whole to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yeah.
And Fishes Us.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this morning is a discussion on bicycle-friendly community designation. We'll call on our friend Wayne Hurley. Good morning, Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor Shire, council members. Good morning. Thanks for putting me on the agenda to discuss this with you. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background briefly about the bike-friendly community application. So, a little bit before 20, I think it was 2014, Patrick actually got a group together, pulled a group together, that was called the Bicycle Friendly Community Application Committee, which didn't exactly roll off the tongue, but it was a working title for a group that came together to talk about how to apply for bicycle-friendly community status. And this is a designation through the League of American Bicyclists. It gives us national recognition for our efforts to become bike-friendly. And so, it's a pretty notable thing. There's not a lot of communities in Minnesota or across the country that have it. And we actually have both bike-friendly community and walk-friendly community. So, we have both of those. We're only one of three in Minnesota that have both. So, kinda cool. So, we applied in 2014, the award levels that are out there. So, you can either get honorable mention, which means you technically don't get an award, but, you know, like, you know, here's a gold star for trying. Then it's bronze, silver, gold, platinum, and diamond. So, that first application, we got nothing. We didn't even get the little gold star. It was just, no, I'm sorry, you guys just aren't there yet. So, we reapplied about a year later and got bronze, which was really cool. So, we went up straight to bronze and skipped over the honorable mention, which was nice. So, what we did in that time period was we formed Pedal Fergus Falls out of the group that Patrick had kind of pulled together. And the city put together the first iteration of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which at the time was a subcommittee to the Planning Commission. So, a few of you probably remember that when I was there. We got some sharos on Lincoln Avenue, which was our first on-street biking structure. So, that was really cool. So, we did a lot of stuff to kinda get us to that bronze level. So, these awards are, they have to be renewed every four years. And so, 2019 is when it has to be renewed. So, we're looking at getting an application by August. That's the due date is August 8th. And so, we're looking for basically the city council's blessing to move forward with an award through Pedal Fergus Falls. We would do most of the work. The one thing we would need, excuse me, well, there was gonna be two asks originally of you. One was for the financial, to pay the fee, but actually this year there is no fee for applying. So, the League of American Bicyclists has a major sponsor that is paying for the fees. So, that's covered. That's not an issue. The other thing is staff time. So, we're gonna need a little bit of help from staff to answer some of the questions. I brought a copy of the application with me. It's a fairly robust application. So, and there's a lot of sections. It's a six E application. So, if you're familiar with the Safe House School Plan that we did a few years ago, it's got the five Es plus equity. So, it's engineering, enforcement, encouragement, education, and evaluation are the Es. So, obviously with enforcement, we want Kyle's help with answering those questions. Brian's with engineering, and so forth. So, I think that's about all I really wanted to say. So, just looking for your blessing to move forward with that application. Myself, Patrick, and Dave Sanderson, along with Patrick's got a Green Corps member who has been assisting us with the application as well. So, we've already been working on it and just kinda get prepped a little bit in anticipation that we're gonna move forward with it for this summer. So...
Thanks, Wayne. Any questions? Anthony?
Would this gain us a status? Would we, is there anything we can do to go from being a bronze to a silver?
Yeah, actually the-
We only have a little bit of time here, Wayne. So, just-
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's a lot we can do, and there's a lot we can't do. I think, I mean, I think we're on the threshold right now. The two big things that the league, they send us a really nice feedback report when we apply, and there's two main things that showed up in there that were kind of like, you know, maybe we can try to tackle these. We've been kinda pushing it a little bit. One is to get a bike plan, an officially adopted bike plan that the city council's adopted. So, there's a couple of different ways we could do that. We've been talking a little bit about master plan and maybe incorporating that into a comp plan. Another possibility would be Pedal Fergus Falls has kind of a vision map of a network. That could just be adopted by the council, you know. So, there's a few things we could do there. One, the other one was to develop a bike map, and we are actively working on that right now. So, yeah. But anything else you guys can do to help?
Yeah, I think you guys are doing a really good job and keep coming forward with a lot of this bike stuff, especially, you know, like the one over by McDonald's. Like, just plans, little plans like that are super helpful in keeping Fergus Falls bike-friendly.
Any other questions, comments for Wayne? If not, do you have a motion to move this forward for the council to adopt the money?
Your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Caroline. All favor that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Sign that motion, Carrie. Thanks, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne. Can I just say one more thing? I'd be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that 30 days of biking starts April 1st. So, if you're not already signed up, love it outside. Well, thanks.
All right, item number two is East Mount Faith Area Street Reconstruction Project all over our city and near- Brian Yvaro, good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, your honor, members of council. Before you is in regards to public improvement 5954, our 2019 street utility improvement project. If you recall, this is our upcoming reconstruction project that's generally located south of Kennedy Park, East Mount Faith, Highland Avenue Summit, generally bound between Mount Faith and Burlington Avenue. I also want to point out part of this project, we are looking to do some waterman work alongside both green areas on Summit too as well, green space areas and everything. And there will be an easement coming before you because we determined that we don't have quite sufficient property to do this waterman. So, that will be coming in the near future here. But more engineering has substantially completed project plan specifications. The estimated construction cost is approximately $2.4 million. Therefore, we must publicly advertise for bids. We've set the bid opening schedule for April 23rd, 2019, at 2:00 PM in these council chambers. Once these sealed bids are open, they'll be publicly read aloud. We will then take the lowest responsible bidder's costs, and then we'll utilize them in the final cost hearing rolls. And if you recall in the schedule, and we're gonna change up the schedule a little bit, than prior years, we're gonna hold a final cost hearing with those assessment rolls, determine if there's any objections with the project, and then make a determination how to proceed farther going forward to ultimately come to a final awarding of the bid. Maintaining the schedule does, however, push the contractors' potential start. We're looking at July. That's about the earliest we can do it. So, given the schedule and everything, but I'd recommend we try to maintain the schedule. But once again, this is all dependent on the final cost hearing once this occurs. Laid out the financing, pretty much proposing as what's been presented before this council. So, just to recap, I'm requesting to accept the project plans and specifications for 5954, authorization to advertise for bids for public improvement 5954, and requesting set the final assessment hearing date for May 20th, 2019.
Thank you, Brian. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Brian, when this was first introduced, there was talk about a portion of Burlington Avenue being possibly included, possibly not. And I know there is a piece of Burlington in what's been presented. Was that added, or was that part of the original deal, and there's more that was considered and not added? I'm just-
It was considered, but we already started the process with assessments. It can be, but it becomes rather difficult. My main thought process was to add it for next near future, primarily because some of logistics, I mentioned, were already started in July.
So, we'd be getting into the school schedule then?
I don't like building roads in the late fall, but yes, with school and everything. That was primary. We do, I understand, it's perfectly, it's, we're just at a start right now. Hopefully next year, we can, it's a small segment. We already have in-house design done, completed. But we're hoping, like I said, have this road potentially, if the council approves, we do it maybe next year if we have funds and approved by the council. But it does, having Burlington does put a lot of restriction there, if we can't get it done by school.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions at the council? If not, is there a motion to bring these actions and set the final-
I made that motion, your honor.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. All favor that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign that motion, Carrie. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is, Michael Olson is here to talk to us on the HRA about the Minnesota housing definition of homelessness. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, mayor, council members. Thanks again for the opportunity. I'm gonna run through very quickly some definitions that have been provided from Minnesota housing and from housing urban development, just on homelessness. And as we get toward the end of the presentation here, we'll talk a little bit about Minnesota housing's application, the financing available, and why I believe this term has come into the conversation. So, Minnesota housing's definition of homelessness is simply a household lacking a fixed adequate nighttime residence, which includes the term doubled up. So, as we continue here, we'll talk more about doubled up. I think Ottertail County and Fergus Falls, I think that's probably the most typical type of homelessness that we experience locally, is doubled up or couch hopping. Persons with no permanent address, sharing a residence with a family member, a friend, you know, whatever other support structure that might turn into for them. HUD has four categories of homelessness, the first being literal homelessness. Individuals or families who live in a place not meant for human habitation, including streets or in their car, emergency shelters, transitional housing, and hotels paid for by government or charitable organizations. The most recent data I could find for this was a publication put out by our local Salvation Army. It was from 2017. And in 2017, the Salvation Army provided lodging for 190 people. I don't have any further data than that. If it's more than one night stay is, you know, what the length of assistance is for that. But that's what I found published locally. So, obviously some demonstrated need there. Imminent risk of homelessness is individuals or families who will lose their primary nighttime residence within 14 days and have no other resources or support networks to obtain other permanent housing. In 2017, the Salvation Army assisted 336 people with rent or deposits on a rental unit. And in 2018, Ottertail County has paid just about $35,000 in emergency assistance toward the prevention of evictions and/or utility shut-offs. Category four, fleeing domestic violence. Individuals or families who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence and who lack, again, resources and support networks to obtain permanent housing. In Minnesota, looking at Minnesota housing definition for households experiencing long-term homelessness, it's persons, including individuals, unaccompanied youth, or families with children, who lack a permanent place to live continuously for a year or more, or at least four times in the past three years. Getting to our locally observed homelessness, again, talking a little bit about doubled up or couch hopping, considered an episode of homelessness if occurrences are more than just a few days and less than a year, and oftentimes it's in multiple locations. In our warmer months around here, we often observe and have reports of homeless persons camping, DeLagoon or Sharon Park in Pelican Rapids. We occasionally hear of residents sleeping in apartment building hallways, you know, fish houses, campers, vehicles in parking lots, et cetera. So, factors that contribute to a housing crisis, you know, issues with roommates or neighbors, criminal history, substance abuse, mental health, physical health, violence issues, can't afford rent. As we talk more about contributing to the affordability portion, in the five-county area, including Ottertail County, a wage of $13.12 is needed to afford rent utilities for a two-bedroom apartment. And what we're factoring in there is 30% of gross monthly income is kind of the standard for housing expenses, rent plus utilities. So, at 13, 12 an hour, working full-time, your rent and utilities should not exceed $682 a month. Anyone paying more than 30% of their income for rent plus utilities is considered cost-burdened. Anyone spending more than 50% of their income is considered severely cost-burdened. Statistically, more than 50% of senior renters and 25% of senior homeowners are cost-burdened. For every 100 extremely low-income families, there are 36 units of available affordable housing. And median rent has risen 9% since 2000, while the median renter income has fallen 11%.
Michael, and all that, those statistics there, that's the five-county area, is that correct?
This is a combination of five county in all of Minnesota.
Okay.
I think the last two points here were brought from the 2017 State of the State Address.
Okay.
So, some of the factors that can help keep and provide stable housing, of course, help with rent deposits, ongoing rental assistance like our Section 8 program, past-due rental assistance, help getting or keeping a job, credit repair, transportation, mental health, chemical dependency support, those type of support systems obviously help. In visiting with West Central Minnesota Continuum of Care briefly this week, they've identified a population in Ottertail County. Now, these are folks who have presented at an assessment site as either under the definitions of HUD homelessness or Minnesota long-term homeless. In Ottertail County, 34 households total have presented. It's eight families, 26 single adults or adults with no children. Of that population of applicants, there's 34 adults, total 17 children, and five households that are youth households, ages 18 to 24.
I'm sorry, Michael, can you go through that again, just so-
Yeah, this is, this slide is probably put together a little confusing. So-
But this is, we're talking right here about the Ottertail County-
This is Ottertail County, and these are folks who have presented at an assessment site and been deemed homeless.
Fit in the categories that you're talking about as far as homeless?
According to the definitions of homelessness, they fit the category.
Sure. Okay.
Right. So, 34 households in Ottertail County, consisting of 34 adults, 17 children, and of those households, five of those households are ages 18 to 24 as the head of household. Which way am I going here? Here we go. Here we go. Here we go. Okay, so just to talk a little bit about the Fergus Falls HRA and some of the programs we offer that help with, hopefully, housing stability for folks locally. Fergus Falls HRA has a Section 8 program or the section, excuse me, the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We currently provide rental assistance in Fergus Falls to 171 housing units. This was March data for 2019. At initial application, we rely completely on the applicant providing data that would suggest that they are apparently eligible to participate in the program. If we review their application and they are apparently eligible, they're put on a waiting list. Fergus Falls, for the Section 8 program right now, has just over 200 people on that waiting list. So, our waiting list for applicants is three to six months. Income eligibility for a single earner is $0 to $24,350 to qualify for Section 8 assistance, and verification of income is required at time of application and throughout the period of assistance. So, there's a program for this in Ottertail County as well. We assist approximately 120 people in Ottertail County, same income requirements. HRA also owns and manages eight scattered-site public housing units throughout Fergus Falls. We own four duplexes in town. We have a resident preference for our applicants. Income eligibility for those units is $0 to $38,950 for a two-person household, excuse me, for a one-person household, and $44,500 is maximum income for a two-person household. Waiting list length is based on vacancies with only eight units and some pretty long-term tenants. We rarely have vacancies in our public housing units. And again, there's eight of those units available in Fergus Falls. We also own and manage Riverview Heights, which is at 205 North Sheridan. There's 59 one-bedroom units available in that high-rise, three of which are handicapped accessible. We have a couple of preferences for applicants down there, customized living preference or assistance to those tenants, elderly, near-elderly, disabled, or handicap preferences. Waiting list is created by date and time of application. Rent's down there at 30% of gross income with a $50 minimum rent and a $500 maximum rent. And income qualifications to access those units, one-person household can earn between $0 and $38,950. So, here's what got us to the conversation. Minnesota housing has a deferred loan program available for developers to apply for zero interest, potentially zero payment dollars for the development of permanent-supported units. So, some of the categories that fall into this would be permanent multifamily rental that is affordable to seniors with at least one household member who is age 55 or older with a gross annual individual income that does not exceed $42,100. At least 5% of the units in the development with a minimum of four units must be for seniors with a gross annual household income that does not exceed $28,300. In addition, permanent supportive housing for persons or families experiencing or at risk of homelessness, permanent supportive housing for people with behavioral health needs, or preservation of federally subsidized rental housing. These are all categories that fall within that zero-interest deferred loan application for the development of these projects. I would add, in addition to this, that HRA is working locally with Lakeland Mental Health, Ottertail County Social Services, city staff, Mohave Atwa, Productive Alternatives, Clay County HRA. I hope I'm not missing anyone. If I am, I apologize. We've formed a local group here that has recognized perhaps a need for some permanent supportive housing. We're taking a look at Minnesota housing's application, and with a little bit of luck, we'll have something put together possibly for next year. So, May 9th, MHFA is gonna bring some, I think, two or three of their representatives to Fergus Falls to meet face-to-face with our group, talk about the application process, talk about how their funding operates, you know, see what kind of opportunities might exist. So...
Thank you, Michael. Questions? Anthony, go ahead.
Obviously, the one thing that got brought up, as you say, that stimulated this conversation was the developer was looking at homeless tax credits. Where does that fall in?
Your honor, members, they're looking at deferred funding.
This is the program they're looking at.
That's, exactly. It's a deferred funding program coupled with a 9% tax credit, or 9% program that Minnesota housing has. And that's one component of this deferred funding. And when we talked about it last, you know, I don't know if I misspoke or if I was misinterpreted, but I was stating that they're exploring this and working through these parameters of these programs. There's nothing that's been decided or set in stone. There's no direction in terms of if they're gonna go for these funds related to homelessness. But to get the project to work financially, these deferred funds play a big role in this particular project that we're working on right now. So, that's why the conversations come up. And to be totally honest and transparent, the developer didn't learn of this until they started the program and were working with Minnesota housing and became aware of these different parameters within these programs. So, it wasn't the intent in the beginning to even talk about homeless. It was when they explored these funding options.
And I think to that point, I think the permanent multifamily rental housing that was affordable to seniors was where the conversation started with the application with Minnesota housing. And as the conversation has developed, and it's been realized that there are other categories that perhaps provide deferred dollars or points to an application process, then it has, you know, sort of trickled out in conversation. So...
So, just so we understand, so it's a competitive application process, and the higher you score on that list, the more components you include in your application, the higher you potentially could score. And that's why they're exploring all different avenues. Is that accurate? These certain funds or programs don't have funds attached with them, per se. They are just part of a package that's put together and scored. Is that accurate?
Right. And, your honor, members, there was a study that came out earlier this week, I pulled it up here, that Minnesota homelessness increased by 10% in the last, or between 2015 and 2018. So, I envision that there's gonna be even more strings attached and more parameters added to these programs as we go through the next couple of years here to address these growing issues. And so, I think it's gonna be more sole requirements in the future. I'm speculating, of course, but I think there'll be more requirements in the future than there are right now related to some of this tied into these funding components. So, just something to be mindful of, I guess, as we proceed down this path.
So, thank you, Michael. Do you feel you have the resources from the city that you need to address, from your perspective and from-
I think, I think we're very early in the process. So, I think, you know, once we have an opportunity to get together with MHFA and talk to them about what, you know, really how the application process looks, we're working right now amongst agencies between Ottertail County Social Services, Mohave, Lakeland Mental Health. What we're really starting with right now is just a local assessment on what our population might be that is in need of permanent supportive housing. And, you know, if we're looking at the redevelopment of a property or new construction and how many units that might be that would actually satisfy the local need for that type of housing.
Sure.
So, we're really early in the process. We've met a couple of times. I think we've got a really good, passionate group working on this. We've committed to meeting, you know, every four to six weeks as needed, just to make sure that we're keeping the process moving forward. And, you know, when we flush it all out, I guess we'll continue to report back and let everybody know what we're up to and what the project looks like.
Thank you very much for all your work on this important topic. Anything else? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is airport management agreement discussion. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Subject before you is in regards to the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport. Fixed-based operator, FBO, had management agreements for a term 2019 to 2021. These agreements both expired February 28th. Fergus Falls Flight Center, that's the current carrier of both these agreements, previously cited no exceptions. This was presented to the council at the February 4th council meeting. The council authorized staff to issue their request for proposals for both of these airport services. From then, I retain the professional services. I'm working with the John Decoster. He's the associate VP from Landrum &amp; Brown, Global Aviation Planning Development Specialist. The primary objective was to, number one, audit the current agreements, develop an RFP, and to facilitate the actual solicitation process going forward. To date, the audit and an RFP, or in version two draft, has been completed and is a deliverable. Since, to back up even more, since January, the Airport Advisory Committee has been discussing a specific topic, along with numerous other topics such as airport development schemes. The Airport Advisory Committee even held a work session March 18th for even further discussion. So, have been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion. So, this following month, this last month, March 25th, the committee had much more discussion, but then voted unanimously on the following actions for this council to consider. The number one in this, I can discuss more, but to process to, because it does counter resolution drafted February 4th. So, we would have to rescind Council Resolution 32-2019. The other second action item was to renew the current Fergus Falls Municipal Airport FBO and Management Services with Fergus Falls Flight Center for year 2019-2021. There's been a three, if not more, but I just want to point out some of the reasons for the recent action. They cited, "The city has not provided the current airport manager a formal performance evaluation that's demonstrating any said unsatisfactory performance." The city is also operating beyond the current contractual term with the current airport manager, and the manager is acting in good faith by providing these services without a contract. Third bullet, in the interest of conserving city resources and the Airport Advisory Committee's volunteers' time, they determined developing a refined job description with established standards of performance, which was considered a much more efficient- which was considered a much more efficient process moving forward, and an attempt to hopefully, if maintain this contract, to have a more defined process when this two-year term comes up. A member of the board is here, Mr. Rod Shields. He also is going to be, has a little short PowerPoint presentation to discuss some of the steps the committee wants to take moving forward.
Good morning, Rod. Welcome.
Good morning, your honor, members of city council and staff. You're representing the Airport Advisory Committee this morning. How do we advance the slides? Do I use the keyboard? Okay. Is it arrowed down? Okay. The committee has looked at the process and what we've recommended for your consideration is to defer the proceeding with the request for a proposal, but to provide an opportunity for us to develop a management system. Elements of that management system would be a job description. We have that in draft form. We have a working session next Monday, April first, and standards of performance to measure how well the person is performing that job. And then an evaluation matrix that's modeled after the one used by city staff and also have some other outside input from other groups in the community so that we can conduct annual appraisals of the airport manager and assess his performance. So we're recommending that we defer for the moment proceeding with the request for a proposal. And here's a timeline. It's rather difficult to read, so we're going to break it into two portions here. We would plan in the next month, in April, to complete the management system documents. And then in the June timeframe, have the initial performance appraisal for the airport manager. That's a formal process that would use the evaluation matrix that's been developed. And then we would go another year into March of twenty twenty, and at that time would perform another evaluation of the individual. And then we would move to develop an RFP in the September timeframe and issue that, evaluate the proposals from prospective airport managers in the November timeframe. And then in December would actually enter into negotiations and on into the early part of the next year. We want to have a defined process. We want to have timelines that match up. We're in a position now where the agreement has expired. The airport manager is operating in good faith. He is obligated to provide insurance, other services. He's doing that without a formal agreement. We'd appreciate the opportunity to put this management system into place and then revisit the RFP process in the latter part of twenty twenty. And we're recommending that action if you would be willing to consider that today.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Rod. So back to the council for some discussion. We would, I think we'll obviously need to discuss this on Monday night because any action officially need to be taken by the council to either rescind a resolution or to continue with the RFP. So I guess let's have some discussion this morning and then we'll ultimately bring this to the council on Monday night for a formal action, whether to rescind that, I'm sorry, rescind that resolution or to continue with the RFP. So, Tom?
Yeah, Rod, I guess if you don't mind, I've just got a couple of questions. So I've heard from, you know, a handful of pilots, you know, concerns like the fact that we don't have maintenance at the airport. And then, and then just kind of some general, you know, lacking in the service, maybe the attentiveness of service and those types of things. And it sounds like we're losing business to the Elbow Lake Airport, for example, because of that. What are some of the steps that the committee is going to take to address those concerns?
Trying to break this down into maybe two portions. First of all, is there an adequate level of service? I personally am a pilot. We have an individual at the airport that is no longer operating in the hangar. I think it's comforting for people to be a little bit uncomfortable with whether or not he was there or not. I think there are good business reasons for the change that was made, from my perspective. I think if you go around the airports in Minnesota today, it's not easy to find maintenance at every airport. And there are some that do it better than others. I think in the case of the individual in Elbow Lake, this is not to, this is only a statement about what that community did to support the individual. He came to them and asked for financial assistance to develop a hangar to start a business. And that was there. I'm not saying we should or should not do that here. I'm not criticizing anything that's ever been done here. But that was part of what made his business successful initially. He has grown the business dramatically. For a small community airport to have the activity that's there, he specializes in helicopter maintenance as well as other fixed-wing aircraft. And so it takes a team to make things work. If you look at the agreement for the airport manager, maybe to the second part of your question, is the performance inadequate? The agreement that we have with the airport manager, I cannot see in there, as I read through it, any definition that says that he must have a mechanic on site and that his performance would be evaluated on whether or not we have a mechanic on site here in Fergus Falls. I think the pilots in the community, myself included, would prefer to have a mechanic. AMP is what is sometimes referred to in the industry. We'd like to have one here, but it's not happening. There is a very qualified firm close by. It's going to take a team to make things change at the airport, and we'd like to be a part of that team with you.
Yeah. And, you know, and we certainly look forward to working with you. I think one of the reasons for the RFP process, why that was, you know, brought forward was because there are, you know, from what I understand, there are entities out there that are interested in, you know, in coming in and bringing these, you know, bringing a mechanic in. And so my, you know, my concern would be that we, you know, stay on our current path for another two years and then maybe make a change and then maybe at that point bring somebody new. And I'm just wondering why, you know, why do we need to wait that long to, you know, nothing against, you know, the current, you know, operator, but I mean, if there's, you know, healthy competition out there, why aren't we encouraging that?
I know the Airport Advisory Committee is much more active with some of the new participants that we have. We'd be enthused to work with the airport manager and city council. Look at, is there a way to bring a business into our community? I think we'll be more engaged in that than we have been in the past. I think we'll have more firsthand insight as to whether or not that's a possibility or not. The airline industry is attracting a lot of people, both in the cockpit and on the ground doing maintenance. That's a dynamic that wasn't in place twenty years ago. That's one of the driving forces for, if we're going to have a mechanic on site in AMP in Fergus Falls, we're going to have to find a way to find someone that wants to be here in our community that maybe is someplace else, wants to return. And this is what happened in Elbow Lake, wants to return to this community. And there's a lot is going on right now. We have a member of our airport committee that is this kind of a person. He's a pilot for Federal Express, FedEx, but he lives here just outside the city limits. And he's a very dynamic, energized person. And we're going to need someone like that. We're going to need some help from the city possibly to work with state and federal government to get some funding. And then I think that'll be part of the formula. And our airport committee will work with the manager to do that. But to place all the accountability on a person without having the rest of the team on board, I don't know that that's a fair assessment of his performance. And whether or not there's a mechanic on site is not included in this airport agreement. And it's currently not included in his job description or his performance standards. We'd sure consider that because other things in there about his working with others to attract business to the community that's airport-related. But it's a team effort, not one person.
Sure. Your honor, can I say something? Excuse me.
Thank you, Rod.
The RFP process, to me, when we initiated that, wasn't related to Kurt's performance or the existing management out there. It was the fact that we've had this manager in place for ten years. We haven't gone through an RFP process in that timeline. I don't know why or how, but between December and January, I had three different parties contact me about their interest in operating the airport. I would not allow them to give me any details on what they would do to try to keep a process like this fair. I would not accept any materials or resumes from them, despite them wanting to send those multiple times because I wanted a fair process. I wanted to allow the city to evaluate proposals evenly and to see what fit into the city council's vision for what the airport should or could be going forward. And so, you know, I want to be clear that this isn't in relation or in response to shortcomings from my perspective or anyone up here related to the current performance. And I think some of these responses are assuming that we have an issue with performance and want to hit reset. But I, you know, ten years is a pretty good cycle in local government to think about, you know, evaluating what's out there. And like you mentioned, Rod, there's a new energy on the airport board and shaping this team to come together. It seems to me like a good time to explore and just see what's out there. You know, if Kurt's the guy and very likely could be at the end of an RFP process, I think that's totally acceptable. But I also think in the public's interest, after a ten-year period and knowing there's multiple interested parties, we probably owe it to the community to at least entertain and see what's out there. That's just from my perspective. I am not an airport guy. I'm not a pilot. And I don't know what all goes into that side of things. But I know anytime there's options to ensure the public that they're getting the best deal, so to speak, or providing the best services, it's always prudent to entertain that to some extent. So that's, that was where I'm coming from in support of the RFP process, but certainly respect the work of the board and want to contemplate and understand where they're coming from as well.
I have two quick questions. So is there any magic reason for the February twenty-eighth contract? Does that just happen to be when the contract's out? That's right. So I hear Rod saying that, you know, based on the timing of it, it would make sense to have a process, a more of a process in place that fits with the time. And I'm wondering if there'd be a way to possibly reevaluate the timeline of the process so that it, I'm thinking that you guys, that the Airport Advisory Committee, and I want to be respectful of the time and the expertise that you guys bring to this process, would be more of a, not rush, not so, not such a rush process that feels like we're actually already beyond contract. So maybe that's something we could consider. And then also, you mentioned April first. You're having a working session of, that's the Airport Advisory Committee?
Yes, we typically have monthly meetings. And then if there's additional business that we have that requires more time, we have working sessions. We've had one already to look at and look at the initial drafts of the job description, performance standards, and evaluation matrix. We're going to finalize those documents as planned next Monday, April first. And that would have finalized documents after that that we could have in place as we prepare for the first evaluation in the June timeframe.
I've heard from people as well who feel very strongly in the RFP process, just as, and it sounds to me like Andrew's endorsing that. However, that being said, we have an Airport Advisory Committee that has the expertise. We ask them to, you know, to be our representatives on this issue. And I just have a hard time believing that we can't come up with some sort of solution that, you know, takes into account some of the concerns of the community, some of the concerns we're hearing from pilots, but also the expertise from the board. And I just, I just have a hard time believing that we couldn't come up with a solution that fits. Anthony, did you have?
Yeah, and obviously I've sat in on a couple of those meetings with Rod and the Airport Advisory Committee. And I would agree that there is a, I mean, I've been involved in the Airport Advisory Committee for a few years. And there is a renewed energy, as Rod said. And I think, you know, that there are some good, you know, the new member, the FedEx pilot, Josh, has definitely got energy and has brought some new ideas to the table, which I think, you know, if we can accomplish, you know, even twenty percent of what his ideas are, would be good for both the airport and for Fergus Falls. But I think I would agree that, you know, we started this process because, you know, we had individuals come forward that wanted to, you know, to submit an application for, you know, management of the airport. But I think somewhere, as you say, we have to find maybe a compromise of whether that's shortening up the timeline. Because as Andrew said, it's, this is about contract renewal, not necessarily about performance review. So, you know, if we're going to do something, then the contract would need to change, I think, to identify what we're going to measure that person with, you know, outside, as you say. So that would, the job description would have to be incorporated in the contract. So if we signed a new contract agreement as it is, then technically in two years' time, we could sit here and have the same argument that the contract doesn't specify, you know, what the performance standard is. And therefore, you know, yes, there's performance evaluations, but they're not included in the contract. And therefore, it wouldn't necessarily be a breach of contract. So I think, you know, maybe it poses all to kind of sit and just think about how we can compromise. And maybe that is just shortening up the timeline to go from it being a two-year process that the airport advisory, you know, down to a one year.
One hundred and six months.
Oh, six months, yeah. I mean, and I think equally, we probably should legitimately look to extend the contract with the current operator, you know, for a period of time, whether that's, as you say, whether that's one hundred and eighty days, just so that, as you say, you know, the present operator knows he's being, he's going to get compensated and that he's not doing it for nothing. But I think, you know, it does boil down to the fact that we've got other interested parties. And I think it would be fair to say that, you know, in the last kind of two to two and, two to three years, this wouldn't be, you know, the first, and it's probably not going to be the last either committee or, you know, contract that the city is reevaluating. You know, we've reevaluated a lot of different structures within the city to reduce the number of committees. So I think this is just another one of those. And I think that's a process that's going to continue on other things. You know, obviously for myself, I've been involved in a lot of those changes. And I would like to think that, you know, some of those changes we're making for the good because it comes down to, you know, present-day Fergus Falls. You know, we've had a lot of closures. You know, there's a lot of pressure to evaluate everything we do, and this is just one of those things. So I don't think it's a personality thing. I think it's a judicial duty to the city.
Thanks, Anthony. Could I, Rod, what time is, just maybe make a suggestion that we have a session with the Airport Advisory Committee to talk about that timeline and how, if there is a compromise, that we could shorten that down? What time do you guys meet on Monday?
Seven-thirty Monday morning is the plan.
Well, we're not going to do that.
But I think individuals can go to that meeting.
Sure. Well, is there, I'm just wondering, is there any chance?
Many of our board and commission meetings are open to the public.
Is there a four-thirty work session on Monday before the council?
I'm just wondering, is there any chance that we could have a, I mean, I know it'd be last minute to call it together, but we don't, we usually have, we reserve time for work sessions at four-thirty. And we have a time slot available on Monday at four-thirty? Well, could we just even leave it open and leave it to the Airport Advisory Committee to see if they would be, would like the opportunity to come and meet with the council for forty-five minutes prior to that meeting?
Just knowing people's schedules, when we schedule that date, I believe that would work for most of the group. Josh Carlson is a key person for us, and he was able to make the seven-thirty Monday. I'm hoping he could be there at four-thirty. But we'll work, is Brian the person we should work with in terms of setting that up?
Yes.
Okay.
And Lynn as well.
We need to legally call it by four-thirty today when the meeting.
Your honor, we'll plan for four-thirty on Monday as you operate.
Thank you very much, Rod.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Rod.
All right.
A couple of questions. I'm not an airport guy like some others, but definitions, I could use a couple of definitions. You mentioned AMP. I don't know what you refer to.
There's two general categories of people that are involved in aircraft. There's the pilot in the cockpit or his first officer on the ground and doing maintenance. AMP is airframe and power plant mechanic. That's where the AMP comes from. And then there's another level of certification above that, a person that can inspect and approve the work of an AMP, and that's called an IA. And they inspect the work of the AMP. And that would be a capability we'd like to have here in the community. I don't know of any pilot in town that would not want to have an AMP here in the community. I think it's highly desired. The airline industry is just, they sent, students go to school to be an AMP and an IA. IA, and the airlines are helping to pay for that, is what I'm hearing from Josh Carlson, and same with pilots, there's, there's a looming pilot shortage right now, and if you look at some of the recent airplane accidents with the commercial carriers, some of the people in the second seat, the co-pilot, have very low hours, $200, $300 in one case with a recent 737 failed craft, so it's a, it's a different dynamic than it was 20 years ago. It's difficult to find pilots that want to have a flight school, is what I'm told, difficult to find the AMPs that would want to hit here, and there has been a good faith effort to do that, as has been reported in past Airport Advisory Committee meetings.
Thank you, thank you, Rod.
The question I have is just, within the city, we've got lots of employees, and so how is this different and why does it require a contract as just being a regular employee? I mean, there's other departments full of employees that aren't contracted with the city, so how does that play in the city's structure that this particular position requires a contract and, and it's not just a direct employee arrangement? Can you address that?
Yeah, your honor. Members. It, it is not an employee, and the reason being is the activities associated with the airport, for example, the fixed base operator and manager of the airport has the ability to lease out hangars at the airport and, and make a business, so to speak, out of it, which an employee of the city would not have the ability to, so based on the operations and the duties associated with the role, it makes more sense to be able to adequately do that through a contracted, it'd be like an independent contractor status rather than employee status, and that's based on the duties and the different operational aspects of the job out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did Tom leave? I was looking at you and Olson, Tom, he had a question, but I guess doesn't have a question. All right, thank you very much, Rod.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else to come before, anything else to say?
I had one. This is just something I wanted to introduce to see if we want to talk about it further, so I'm not expecting to have a discussion about it at this point, but I received an email from a fellow named Fitzy Heimdahl, he's a preservation guy from Duluth, and he works with AmeriCorps programs, we've had AmeriCorps programs, people here in the past that do various projects in town. This particular organization that he's with is called the Northern Bedrock Historic Preservation Corps, and he's offering to, if we're open to it, bring a crew in here for a week or more to do some kind of historic preservation work, and in particular it was because of the RTC that he contacted me, and he wondered if we had some way that we'd be able to use their services, and it would be a very inexpensive way to have a group come in and do something. He didn't make any suggestions, I didn't make any suggestions, I just thought it might be a way for us to have a group come in, maybe do some cleanup, they do things like plaster repair, mason repair, carpentry, cleaning, perhaps they could do some mold remediation or something and, you know, work on the central tower building, I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility. I'm thinking it's something that we could investigate a little bit, and I could forward this email on to the rest of you, and we can talk about it at a future meeting.
Yes, certainly. I can't see a reason why we wouldn't take up the, I mean, of course we have to go through the insurance and all the legalities and stuff, but if, I would suggest if you could get that to Andrew, and then Andrew and Lynn can get it out to us and to the proper staff, and we could discuss what that would entail. Thank you for bringing that forward, Scott. Anything else to come before the council? Not worried, John.